Caruso.
Yeah, here.
Giannano.
Here.
Casa.
Here.
Pucci.
Here.
Loza.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Alano.
Here. Can I stand for the budget in this place?
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this holy and justiciable court.
Sir, page of the has been advertised according to the sunshine block.
Thank you. May we have, uh...
Mr. Chairman, before we start, just to do the record, I'll be needing an hour and a half of time.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, who is first on?
Next up.
Alright, so, uh, if we're not done with it, my case, we need all these things. Okay? So, uh, let's start with the minutes from last month. Anybody later have any questions? Concerned? Can I have a motion for?
One more motion.
Uh, who's first?
Casa.
Ten seventy, I job.
Caruso.
Yes.
Giannano.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Loza.
Yes.
Pucci.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Alano.
Yes. Any applications for adjournments? Any, any applications for adjournments?
Yes.
Sorry, I told you so. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I represent thirty-three days, thirty-seven, Ruffey Street, Party Attorney case, and I'm requesting an adjournment because my expert is away on paper.
Before I go into that, there was a question.
Yes.
From Mr. Sheldon.
One request of you, before we hear your case, would it be possible for you to give us a listing of any similar businesses in the IP zone that have retail? Because the, your case is...
I'll ask my planner to try to investigate that.
It would help. Your case is premised on us approving retail operations at this store.
Minor retail operation.
I might want...
Minor, I don't want to get into it again, very minor.
I'd like to know if this is a precedent or if there are any other businesses operating as retail in the IP zone. If you could give us that information, I think it would help a lot. Okay.
Thank you.
So, we can carry to January 4th, 2018, seven o'clock in this room.
Without further notice.
Without further notice, I would ask you one thing, Mr. Gassion. Apparently, there's an objector attorney that's...
There absolutely is, Mr. Duzenberry.
Mr. Duzenberry, could you advise him?
I already did.
You did.
He said...
Does he know about the January 4th?
He does. I'll do, I'll do it again, but I told him when, I expected it would be her.
Thank you.
Despite him being an objecting attorney, he's a friend.
Any other, uh, questions that we need to... Do you need this or do you just...
No.
So, no more communications, right?
No.
Okay. So, uh, anybody who is here for application ZB twenty seventeen dash zero eighteen that has been adjourned through January the fourth at seven o'clock additional. See you then. Uh, the next case, I believe, is ZB twenty seven, twenty seventeen zero seventeen, one fifteen, applications.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, counsel, call. San Ambrogio, we have the applicant in this matter. As you know, the property in question...
Interrupted for one moment, Doc. Can you open on this?
Property in question is one thirteen Franklin Street, uh, the corner of Belmont. Sure, all of you have passed it hundreds of times. My client purchased the property earlier this year. It's a legal non-conforming use as a gas station in that DE zone. So, we're before you on a D variance. Would be considered an expansion, perhaps, of this non-conforming use, although I would argue, hopefully I'll argue, but it's actually a vitiation of the non-conforming use because the plan is to replace the auto repair bays with a convenience store. I have three witnesses, I'd like to call Ms. Cowherd, who is the owner of the property, briefly, an engineer, Mr. Adnan Khan, and then a planner, Gerald Howzel. As you may glean from the plans, the area in question comprises fifteen hundred square feet. The proposed use of the convenience store aspect of the building is a permitted use in the zone.
Well, just to be clear, you're going to be keeping the gas pump?
Yes, the gas pumping aspect would continue.
And removing the bay aspect, the repair shop?
Yes, there will be no changes to the footprint of the building. We have architectural plans, merely closing those in and putting, uh, attractive windows, door, and then cleaning up the premises with some better lighting, landscaping, and things of that nature. Okay? So, I'd like to call Ms. Sandeep Cowherd.
Good evening.
Come over here. That's it.
Raise your right hand, please. With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be true?
Yes.
Could you state your name and spell it, please?
What is your name and spell your name?
Sandeep Paul, S-A-N-D-E-E-B-L-A-F-I-C-A-P-O. I'm sorry, S-A-N-D-E-E-B-E-E-B.
P.
P-E-E-P.
Sandeep.
L-A-F-I-C-A-P-O-T-A-U-R. K-A-U-R. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cowherd, where do you reside?
Six oh two Union Avenue, Dalston University, V-71.
And you are the owner of the property that we're discussing today, is that correct?
Yes.
And you've owned it since approximately May of this year, two thousand and seventeen?
Yes.
And you bought it from Mr. Gassion?
Yes.
Have you been using any of that premises to do auto repairs?
No.
Are you seeking permission this evening from the board to change the repair bays into a convenience store area?
Yes.
Do you and your husband own any other gas stations of this nature?
Yes.
Approximately how many?
Six.
Six. In your other premises, do you also have a convenience store aspect to the gas station?
We have two locations already.
So, you have experience running that sort of operation?
Yes.
If the board were to grant the permission that we're seeking, what would your hours of operation be?
Six AM to twelve PM.
Seven days a week?
Yes.
And we have an engineer who's going to testify, but what will you do in terms of disposing of garbage on the premises?
Yes, we now have a tally captain company to put their containers on the properties, putting them in the containers and moving them up.
And is your proposal to improve the physical condition of the property with improved lighting?
Yes.
A little bit of landscape?
Yes.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Let's start down here, anybody have any questions?
Uh, six to twelve, that's for both the convenience store and the ESO.
Yes.
What's the highest number of employees at one time?
Four.
Four?
Let's hold for you now. Anyone else have a question? Do you have any question? The only question I have, do you have any other business like this in Belmont?
No.
I was having a question.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to call Mr. Adnan Khan, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any, anyone needs to have any question on testimony at this given? I want to show none.
With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be true, so we got it?
I used to move in this way.
I had testified in front of this board.
Could you, uh...
We're going to go over here.
Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Sure, it's Adnan Khan, K-H-A-N.
Thank you.
Has he appeared before this?
I believe so, and we'll get that out of him in a minute.
Yes, my sense is...
Very quickly. I'll try to do that, and as soon as you're comfortable, we'll proceed.
I'm waiting.
Okay. Mr. Khan, please advise the board of your education and your experience as a professional.
Um, I'm a civil engineer by background with bachelor's degree in civil engineering, masters in construction management, professional engineer in New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, Maryland, certified master's school of engineering in New Jersey. I've testified in front of this board and several other boards in New Jersey, Pennsylvania.
Everybody have any question with this? You've been here?
Yes.
Anybody have any objections?
No.
I want to show none.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Khan, I'm sure you have studied the site and the Belmont coordinates as a relation to this application?
Uh, yes, I did.
And you drew the plans that we've submitted as part of this application?
Uh, that's correct.
Which we could consider P1?
Well, is this, is what you're showing us the same thing that we have on our back?
That's correct.
We don't need to mark it.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Would you please redo your plans with the board?
Uh, sure. I'm going to start with the cover sheet, C dash O one, which gives a depiction of the property with respect to the text map and the zoning map and a general overview of the site. The site is located in DE Commercial Shopping Center District, and either the gas station or convenience store is not a permitted use, but the gas station is an existing, a gas station with an auto repair facility that currently exists on the property. I'm going to go quickly over the site plan. What the applicant here is proposing is to keep the existing, uh, to keep the existing building footprint as is. They're going to make some facade improvements as well as interior renovations to convert the existing auto repair aspect of the property into a convenience store. The gas station functionality will remain the same as it is with the two fuel pumps and, uh, the entrances and exits the way they are. However, we are improving the entrance from Franklin Street. We are making, like currently, there's a depressed curb which is much wider. We are channelizing the depressed curb, making it twenty-four feet in and out, as well as we are also doing the depressed curb, uh, channelizing in, uh, in and out driveway on Belmont Avenue. As part of this application, the applicant is proposing seven parking spaces, two for employees, two parking spaces will be dedicated to employees, which are the most, I would say, southern tandem parking spaces. In addition to that, we have three parking spaces, uh, three, five parking spaces for patrons, including one rent accessible and indoor parking space. Also, we are proposing improvements of landscaping and lighting throughout the property. One thing I want to mention is, currently, the site is mostly impervious, the lot. We are decreasing the impervious coverage by approximately thirteen hundred square feet and adding a lot of trees, evergreen and deciduous trees along Belmont Avenue and to the property to the west, and utilizing that green area to smooth up the appearance of the property the way, from the way it looks currently. Sheet C dash, oh, I'm going to go to sheet C dash O four, which is landscaping and lighting plan.
I'm sorry. Can you say that again, Mr. Khan?
Uh, C dash O four.
Okay, are we skipping O three?
O three is a grading plan, basically just explains like how the grading of the proposed grading of the site works. I'll have the last. I can, I can go over like a little bit of grading, like the side is very flat and since most of the front portion or the eastern portion of the site is not going to be unaltered or not going to be altered, which includes a concrete pad for the fuel pumps and the fuel tanks, we are proposing some work on the driveway, so, but the grades are not going to change, so it's basically just showing some grading to kind of like, uh, implement the proposed improvements with the existing.
Could you, could you show me the access when I, when I drop you?
Uh, they utilize, uh, currently, like, uh, this Franklin Street private, the depressed curb currently that exists is wider than twenty-four feet. I believe it's about twenty-two or thirty-three feet. So, the access through Franklin Street and then the fuel tanks are to the southeastern cor, southeastern portion of the property.
So, does it interfere with any of the parking that you're providing or not?
Uh, no, it won't. It won't interfere with the parking, and I, I believe the fuel services are made early in the morning or...
Yeah, I know. I see that all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, but when you're trying to get around Belmont Avenue.
All right, uh, sheet C dash O four is, again, as I mentioned, is a part, uh, landscaping and lighting plan. We are proposing three eight-foot-high building mount lights, uh, wall packs, and one ten-foot-high pole-mounted light. All these lights will be, will be LED light type lights, and they comply with the requirements of the ordinance. And as I mentioned, that we are proposing about eighteen, uh, seventeen evergreens and one deciduous tree along the southern and western property lines. I think that's pretty much it. Since the architect's gonna make it tonight, I, if you want, I can go over some of the architectural aspects.
Do you want to, uh, does he want to go over Mr. Harrison's letter?
We didn't see it.
Yeah, we didn't.
We sure will be happy to.
Then you guys have electric copies, not on the board?
Or maybe we can let Mr. Khan study that, and we'll have the next witness and then bring Mr. Khan back?
If you don't have an electric copy, I have it.
Get it up forward, twenty-eight.
Mr. Khan, before you review that, um... Did you, I might have missed it, indicate where the, like, the dumpster location would be?
Yeah, what, what we are proposing is, again, a board, uh, board-on-board fence type, uh, tranche enclosure. And it is about nine feet by twelve feet, and that will be located behind the loading and loading area that we're proposing. So, and then currently, there exists a small, smaller tranche enclosure and currently exists on the property. We're making it to look much nicer, it's a board-on-board fence, and it's a little bit bigger than the previous.
If I may, while we're on that, did I hear there was going to be daily pick-up from your first witness?
Schedule.
I didn't hear that. I'll find out or bring her back up if we need to, with the ease on the road. How quickly they dispose garbage? Every day, once a month?
It's a, it's a good idea.
Okay, so we'll get that under oath in a moment. In answer to your question, it's planned twice a week.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, yeah, the engineering plans, I'm done. If you want, I can go over the architecture plans.
Just briefly, the architect, because he couldn't appear tonight, but Mr. Khan is acquainted with it, and that's the same plan that he's putting on the easel that is part of your application. Well, there's a different architect, he couldn't make it. It's relatively simple, because there's no structural changes other than, so I thought, while he's here, he has expertise.
He's here, you're like, oh, yes.
And that's what exactly I'm going to say, like, again, I'm looking at the architecture plan, which is the same copy that was submitted to the board. It's exactly the same copy, and if you look at it like, it, to the left, it shows the existing layout that currently exists inside the building, which has three service days, a workroom, a storage room, and an office area. What the applicant is proposing is they're proposing like a convenience store type layout with the racks and refrigerators to the bigger portion on the right, and then they will have a workroom, a storeroom, and office, completely remain the same. Yes, they are proposing like an easy accessible restaurant.
What's the square footage on the retail aspects?
Uh, let's see. The total square footage is fifteen ninety-one, and I think it's about like sixty, sixty-five percent of that is the retail.
So, sixty percent of sixteen hundred?
Uh, about sixteen hundred, approximately.
Any other questions, Mr. Chairman?
Question, please. Are there any restrictions on the turn directions at the exits? It looked to me from the plans that you were going to have right turn only onto Belmont? Is that...
Uh, no, we don't have any, like, restrictions, no, like, we don't have any...
Not on the plan yet.
But if the board wishes, yeah, it can be channelized.
I think it might be a good idea to have only right turns onto Belmont. You're so close to that intersection, left turns may be virtually impossible, especially during rush hour and greens. I think it was right turn only onto Belmont would be your advice there.
Yeah, I don't see any issue with that, like, I think, like, yeah, we can agree with that.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
And then the architectural sheet A dash two is, uh, the existing elevation front, elevation and Belmont Avenue elevation, and then in comparison to that, the proposed elevation, uh, as you see, like, the proposed elevation, it's, uh, doors will be removed and it will be replaced with the glass windows and the doors. So, that's pretty much on the architectural side I have.
One second.
What will become the bathroom accessible from the outside?
Excuse me?
The bathroom not only accessible from outside, uh, would that be remodeled from what we presented?
Uh, actually, I, I think they are showing a dotted line with a door to outside, I don't know whether that was finalized or not, but if that's required, I think they have a room that they can make that bathroom accessible from outside.
Then my question is, would it always be open? Was it a key to get in?
I will defer that to the applicant.
The question is, uh, is the bathroom to a customer, do they kind of go inside?
One, I have one, I have the rear mission. One, one people outside, follow.
And one on the outside will potentially have a key? We'll get that under oath too, but the indication is the one on the outside will be controlled by a key.
But there's one inside?
Yes, there's one.
Yeah, I just see, like, there are two bathrooms, yeah.
In the equipment, I mean, I'm sorry, in the workroom, could you tell me what equipment is there? I didn't understand all the little diagrams.
Oh, I think they're showing like a sink there, and I think some washer-dryers and things like that of nature, and maybe a refrigerator.
So, there's a washer-dryer?
I don't like, or maybe different, oh, sorry, they are the sinks, like, they are different sinks, like, maybe hard, or like the, the sinks that usually you have, like, in the kitchen, like the big sinks?
Slab sink.
Yeah.
Three sinks?
I, I, you know, like, there are, there are three rectangles shown, so I'm believing there might be like one of those commercial-sized sinks.
And then I have a question, the big box at the X floor.
I'm sorry, David.
The big, the larger box at the X fell through in that room also. I didn't know what that was. In the workroom.
The owner may know that, having discussed it, we'll call her back up for your questions, sir.
Another question. Uh, okay, um, C zero five, C zero five, in the area of the trash enclosure, which looks like it's dotted as opposed to white, I was just curious what that was?
Uh, C zero five is the construction detail sheet. Maybe if you're looking to C zero two, that's the general site plan?
I'll pick that one up now, however. Just to the back of the new closure here for Detroit, I should, behind the door, is a tank, a above-ground tank, do you know what that is?
Uh, yes, the oil tank, yes.
And will it still be used?
Uh, no, that will be taken out, and it will then be connected with gas.
Okay, I guess my other question is the owner.
Any other questions for this one?
Just want to follow up, question, I also had a question, so I was perplexed by the diagrams in the new workroom, whether it was the sinks or cooking equipment. Is there any hot food being sold through this, this store?
Uh, then again, there's a question from the other.
They're shaking their head nope, we'll get, we'll call them back up.
Cooking being done in that room?
Any other questions for this, this witness here? Any questions for this witness here?
I don't know if you can hear this. Uh, for security purposes, are there going to be security cameras in it? Because I know the gas station has been robbed several times in the past.
Yes.
And I think that would deter and help out not only the employees, but customers, especially the customers in the store. Just the, the C cameras, sometimes people walk through.
The owner is nodding her head yes.
Anybody else have question for this one?
Mr. Chairman, shall we go over your engineers? You're just getting, would you like a moment to...
Yeah.
We'll save any public...
Wants to be bringing the owner back up to answer those pending questions? Mr. Khan, will you come back up? Okay.
Mr. Pucci.
Well, one of my questions was, will there be any cooking done on Christmas? Therefore, there's no need for any grease traps, correct?
No grease traps, since there's no cooking, there will be no grease.
Well, if that's on, Frank will make that decision.
Correct.
There is, okay, there's, could you explain what the equipment is in that room?
Okay, so the architect's drawing. Mr. Khan, do, the architect's drawings for, Miss Cowherd? Okay, so, if a board member has a question about one of those rooms, can you help? Can we swear the husband in?
I'm sorry, if she's going to sit down, her wife's right in there.
Wait, wait. We can tell her if she can tell the conversation. I don't want to be off center.
Can I ask, but it's, it's the bottom.
What I was told is like that three rectangles in the... Uh, what I was told is like that three rectangles indicates the sinks. And the other rectangle to the right of the three is the mop sink. And this is more like for cleaning, like the, I mean. And this, they said like there used to be an old compressor, which probably they would have to take it out.
They would take it out.
Mr. Sheldon, anything?
Well, that's it, I answered your question.
And they've got the cameras.
We're, we're a man, once you come on back.
Will there be security cameras?
Yes.
Inside and outside, and also by the pumps. I know they have been robbed several times.
Yes, yes.
That will help.
They know from their other stations in their locations.
I'm ready to testify.
Is anybody that you wanted to have any questions of the testimony that she just gave? I'd like to show none, but I had to.
Okay. Mr. Khan, you've had a chance to review Mr. Hurick's letter, reviewing this application. Would you go through it one by one, please, in addresses, comments?
Uh, yeah, number one, I ask for the applicant's store hours, number of employees, garbage and recycling. So I think between myself and the applicant, we testified to that.
She indicated four employees, and it was six that were out, seven days ago.
It was recycling and garbage, including that, what I mean, that pesting area.
That's correct. Uh, number two says the applicant engineer should fully review deliveries to the site. A loading dock due to the size can only accommodate S U V vehicles. And that is correct, the loading dock size is meant for like a box truck type deliveries for convenience store. Because the fuel deliveries are done separate to the incineration delivery now.
So that brings up a great point. So is it a testimony of your applicant that is a box type and not truck trailers, getting deliveries?
Yes.
Except for the fuel delivery.
They don't put fuel in a box. Last I can, anyway.
Yes, we can get that testimony, but that's the understanding, would not be a.
If you're mature, that's the.
Right, the delivery trucks for food and whatnot, box trucks more likely, that's my show.
Uh, number three, the employee parking stalls are only eight and a half feet wide. However, however, considering the minimal turnover of these parts, the board should consider granting, board may consider granting this variance. Number four, the applicant's engineer should review the site circulation and the driveways to be constructed and or remain. And again, we looked at it and then we would be more than happy to discuss if there are any concerns.
I mean, if the board wants to only make a right turn out of Belmont, I think it's going to be proper signage and arrows and stuff. Yeah, that's the plan.
No problem.
We can do that. Uh, number five, the applicant should indicate if the paved areas will be milled and overlaid. Uh, yes, the paved areas will be milled and overlaid because of the current condition.
I guess you made that.
Will put an O to that effect on the plans. Uh, number six, damaged sidewalk along the side front edge shall be removed and replaced. And I don't see the problem with that. Number seven, the applicant's engineer should review the proposed landscape, landscaping and lighting. We did present in a plan unless there are any concerns.
You can answer the rest of the questions.
You okay?
Yes.
Any additional questions?
It's good to be counted approval for anything.
Yes.
Is it being the answer I had to say, the engineer?
No.
And any more questions from the board? I mean, said, any questions of this applicant from anybody from the audience? I want to show none?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Next witness is Gerard Hazel, professional planner. How are you?
So when you're ready, if you could raise your right hand. With regard to this applicant, please, where the testimony you're about to give, show you the truth. Did you state your name and spell your last name?
Gerard Hazel. Yes. Last name, H A I Z E L.
C E, it's G J with a J or G?
G E R A R.
Thank you. H I Z E, thank you.
Mr. Hazel, would you please advise the board of your education and your experience as a professional planner?
Sure. Uh, I have, possess a bachelor of arts degree in city planning and community development. I have a master's of planning degree from N Y U. Uh, I am licensed by the State Board of Professional Planners as a professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and also a member of the American Institute of Civilized Plan.
And are you self-employed or are you part of a group?
I'm part of the planning consulting firm, Mission.
Do you sit as a consultant on any boards in the county?
Yes, I do serve as a board planner through the forum for several cities, including the city of North of Bolton, Bluefield, Orange, and.
Licenses is covered, I'm sure, right?
Yes.
That means it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the, of the board. Don't want to belabor too much of what has been presented so far, but if I can just, uh, just quickly review what is being requested of you tonight. Uh, the applicant is proposing to convert an existing auto repair business or use on an exist, on a lot that also has a functioning gasoline station on it as well. They are looking to convert the auto repair aspect of the business to a convenience store. In doing so, they have triggered several, the need for several variances. These include variances for the expansion of the gasoline station use. A D one variance for the having two principal uses on one lot. Bulk variances for minimum lot size, minimum lot width, minimum lot depth, minimum rear yard setback, and minimum side yard setback. All of which I should mention are existing non-conformities, which, as you heard from the presentation before, will not be exacerbated in any way by the proposed developments. I'd like to just hand out to you some exhibits. Exhibit one, if I can.
Sure, we'll mark that A one.
Yes, says that was not handed in previously.
Okay, it looks to be an aerial.
Yes, this is an aerial view of the site, showing the surrounding area as well as the zone boundaries and the zone designated designations. At the same time, let me just mark.
Now, Mr. Hazel, across from, when was this, when, when was this aerial taken?
Uh, I believe it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a Google aerial. And I think it's, if I recall, I think it was in twenty sixteen?
All right, but it's accurate as to what's there now?
Yes. Okay, I would also like to hand out exhibit two, which is a photo survey that was taken, four sheets, including eight photos that were taken of the, in and around the, the subject site. These were taken by me within the past more or less three weeks. And if I can just go through these with you. Exhibit one, as you can see, the subject site is outlined in yellow. It is located in the B E, uh, commercial shopping center zone. It is surrounded by the R C zone, which is a multifamily residential to the south and the, and again, to the north and northeast. And the, to the, to the west of the site is the, I think it's called a life sub storage facility beyond, which is the stop and shop shopping plaza within the city, adjacent city. Looking at the, the photo survey of the surrounding site, photo one is a depiction of the site as it exists today. This is taken from approximately from the northeast, looking at the intersection. Photo two, you can, again, a picture of the site looking towards the west. Uh, you can see the subject building, the building that is being proposed to be converted from the auto repair use to the convenience store. You can also see the canopy and gas pumps. Photo three is another view of the, the subject building. Uh, photo four is a look at the south southeastern area of the site, showing what would be the parking area as well as the eastern facade of the building. Uh, photo five shows, uh, looking, looking east on Franklin Avenue, on Franklin Street, some of the mixed use and residential properties that front on the, on the street. Figure six is approximately the same. Uh, figure seven is looking at the, the buildings fronting on the opposite southern side of Franklin Street, uh, directly across from the subject site. And the last picture, photo eight, is looking, um, east on site towards the intersection.
Beautiful.
So that, that's generally a description of the site. As indicated before, the applicant is proposing to convert what is a fifteen hundred and sixty-two square foot commercial structure on the site to, uh, from a repair, auto repair use to commercial, a convenience store use. Uh, the interior build, the interior of the building will be renovated and reconfigured as described by the engineer to have display racks, tools, and other related equipment for the convenience store. As well, uh, seven on, seven parking spaces are being provided on the site, one of which is A D compliant. There is also, as you will see on site plan, a four foot concrete sidewalk that extends from the parking area to the entrance of the proposed convenience store, so that customers can get from the parking to the store safely and not run the risk of running into cars coming to get gas, et cetera. Okay, we did go over the, the releases that are being sought. Uh, I just have a few comments from a planning perspective, uh, some of the issues that are questioned here. With respect to the co-location of the both uses on the site, the B commercial zone does not permit gasoline stations. The station on, the station on the subject site has existed there for some time with the existing auto repair business. Thus, the two uses on the site is not something that is new to this site. It has existed previously. The existing gas station and proposed convenience store will coexist seamlessly on the site, with each complementing each other. The proposed replacement of the auto repair use by the convenience store will represent an overall improvement in the site by eliminating a use that is less compatible with the surrounding uses. The proposed convenience store is a permitted use in the zone and will be replacing one that's not. The introduction of the convenience store is, you know, should be looked at in the context of the wider changes in the overall industry. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure whether other similar applications like this have come before you before, but this is a type of application that in, in the development of planning, we'll be seeing quite a bit. This is representative of a shift in the overall business plan, if you will, of the gas station slash convenience stores. And, um, you know, you can trace this back all the way to pre-World War Two and young, I'm sorry, and, and, and moving forward to where we are today, where we've seen the gas stations evolve from basically being service stations where they provide gasoline as well as other services, like sales of petroleum products, auto repair and so forth, to just sell extracted gas so people can just basically gas up and go. And they evolved more recently through the eighties and nineties to what we're seeing now, uh, collating, co-locating convenience stores with these gasoline. I think this is also a, a byproduct of the changes in our lifestyles. We're basically looking for convenience, time has become so much of a precious commodity. We're looking for any opportunity to save some time and, and sometimes picking up gas, getting gasoline, and being able to pick up a, a carton of milk or something is the, the best. I'd like to call your attention to one court case that basically was decided with an issue that you're being asked to consider tonight. I call your reference to the Brilliant Convenience Flatship Eight versus the zoning board of adjustment for the Village of Ridgewood and six fifty-seven Ridgewood LLC. This was a case that was, was decided earlier this year in March. Essentially, the applicant in this case had a, ran a gasoline station on the site for over forty years. It was a pre-existing, non-conforming use in, in the village's O B two zone. The applicant sought to upgrade the gas station by adding a seven eleven convenience mall to the property. By so doing, he triggered the request for a D variance, use variance, and several C variances. I should mention that both the convenience store and the gas station, in this case, were not permitted uses in the zone. The board granted the application and determined that the gas station and convenience store were a new single use. On appeal, the court found that the zoning board's determination that the gas station and convenience store constituted a single use was not arbitrary and arbitrary, capricious, or unreasonable, and upheld the granting of the variances.
So to interrupt you for a moment, so as to the one reason we are here for the variances, the two uses on one piece of property, that topic has been, is being addressed by you as a professional, and you're citing this court case where some judge felt that way as well.
That's correct. There, there, there are quite a few other court cases where the judge felt similar. If I can move to my proofs now for the requested variances. Uh, as mentioned before, there are two D variances being requested, a D one and a D two for expansion of the non-conforming use. And in my opinion, I feel that there, I find that there are special reasons for the granting of, of these variances. I, uh, in my opinion, the granting of these variances will fulfill the purposes of the ordinance, specifically purpose A, to encourage municipal action to guide appropriate use of development of lands in the state in a manner which is, which will promote public health, safety morals, and general welfare, and purpose G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. And just a comment on, on those two. As detailed earlier, the subject site has accommodated two uses for quite some time. So this is not a phenomenon that will be occurring here. And the proposed convenience store will be an improvement, overall improvement to the site. As you heard from the presentation of the engineer, there's going to be upgrades to the, the site itself, landscaping, paving, and things of that sort. Uh, I also find that the site is particularly suited to this use. You know, it is in close proximity, if you can look at the aerial map that I handed out exhibit one. It is in close, the site is in close proximity to the Silver Lake Light Rail Train Station. And this is the route by which many residents do walk past to go commute there every day. And it is very likely that this convenience store will become a resource and some, and a facility that is heavily used by commuters each day. I also find that the proposed, the requested variances will not, in my opinion, they will not be any substantial detriment to the public good by the granting of these requested variances. The proposed uses, proposed uses will be completely accommodated on the site with little or no substantial adverse impact on the surrounding properties. Again, parking is being provided to the level that is required and above. In terms of the proofs for the bulk variances that are being requested, again, lot area, lot width, lot depth, rear yard setback, side yard setback, again, these are all existing conditions which will not be at all in any way worsened or exacerbated by what is being proposed here. And again, I think that these variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the surrounding area and to the zone plan. And that concludes my presentation.
Mr. Hazel, just briefly, and I know it was, I know probably an oversight, but you were, when you were referring to purpose A and purpose G as part of your testimony, I think you inadvertently said with regard to the subjects of the Belville ordinance. But you were factlogging about what, sir?
The, the, the municipal land just law forty fifty-five D.
Dash two, we knew that, but just correcting, thank you.
Pardon.
Two questions. Where was that court decision?
Uh, I, I do have the actual copy of the transcript, so I can check. I don't have the citation. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It was in the.
Ridgewood.
Ridgewood.
And that was a big huge seven eleven, not just a little. And that was a big huge seven-eleven, not just a little fourteen-hundred square foot.
And just the last comment you made about parking and waiting.
Yeah. It, it exceeds what you require, as it says, right here. See, see, uh, Mr. Harris.
But we do, the size of those two spaces, we do need a variance.
The number. You were referring to the number.
Yes.
Am I correct?
Yes, yes. Five, five spaces are required under the ordinance for both new system bodies and seven. Two.
Mr. Harris, is four or five?
Five, four for the convenience and one for the gas station.
Five, five bargains for the water.
It's okay, right? It meets, it meets. Anybody else have any questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions? Test not even given. I didn't. So let us show none.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
We appreciate your time listening to the application. I think it's a strong application. The planner didn't mention my argument about we're lessening a non-conforming use rather than expanding it by getting rid of something that's not permitted, which is the repair of automobiles, which is kind of a, possibly, and I'm not insulting it, a messy occupation or, or activity. There won't be, uh, trucks towing in cars that are broken down to be repaired. There'll be an overall improvement to the appearance of the location. And I'm sure you are all recognize the trend nowadays of the gas stations that everybody's sneaking a convenience store to. That seems to be the future and this is a great spot for it. And it will serve the community, not just the motorists, but there are some residential, uh, apartment buildings in that area. They walk across the street and get their, God forbid, cigarettes or magazine, whatever they want. So I think it, uh, is an overall improvement to the area and I request that you grant our application.
Yeah, and, uh.
Other comments? Is that your, is that your case, sir? Yes, it is. Is that your case? Okay.
I have.
Housekeeping. Any testimony, uh, anybody in the audience have been going in this application? See, Len, that went in the flat door, is not. Mr. Fuocci, you have some points where it just.
Couple comments. No mention, nothing has been mentioned about security.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was.
Security cameras.
Mr. Jordan, I don't ask about the cameras.
Inside and out.
Yeah, he did. He asked that question.
Okay. Supporting Belmont Avenue, no left turn on that avenue. Also, the northern side of Belmont Avenue, when they get a green light, I mean, I'm sorry. Yes, the left side. They get a green light to turn onto Franklin, they immediately have a yellow, uh, green light to turn left onto Belmont. So they'll come zigzagging around that corner. So.
You mean in terms of people, uh, crossing the parking lot to get to, to avoid the light?
No, no.
I have like a survey here.
The question is. Sir.
I didn't keep them. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Hazel.
Two things. You can see where the stop line is.
Yes.
For those cars.
Yes.
Not even that far. Now, go further to your left. You see the building with sort of orange trim?
Yes, sir.
That is also Belmont Avenue.
Yes, sir.
When they get the green light.
Who's there?
Right.
Who's there? People on Franklin or people on Belmont?
On Belmont. When they get a green light to turn right onto Franklin, they also have a green arrow to turn left on, to the other part of Belmont.
Okay, I understand that.
So going around there.
Yes.
If you had a car trying to come out, it would be a disaster. That's just in support of no left turn.
Oh, it's not arguing.
I'm trying to figure out where you're going.
Well, thank you. We'll put a nice, good, strong sign there.
I have one more. Also by the Belmont Avenue exit, the shrubs that are going to be planted along there. Uh, the first, let's say five, should be like dwarf shrubs so they wouldn't.
Line of sight.
Line of sight.
Yes, of course. Thank you for that comment.
That was it.
Anybody else have any comments?
I, I agree with the, 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 the shrubs.
Okay, right. Line of sight.
Yep.
Mr. Shall we?
We could put bonsai there. It's a little Japanese.
So, what's your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve with the conditions of the right turn only on Belmont, the north of the shrubs. We have, uh, with that, that, inside and out. The right turn only on the Belmont, proper signage and arrows. Enter revise the plans and the couple of locations to, uh, make them more accurate. Security cameras, uh, clear line of sight where appropriate, trucks. I had no tractor trailers for the delivery plant. Yes, okay.
I'd like to.
And that's, and, and a normal condition.
I would like to have hours of operation, listen in at six, six to twelve.
Yeah. Six to midnight, seven days.
And the, the video, the video surveillance system should be high definition so that the public police department needs to finish license plates. It'll be easier for them to do so.
She said yes.
No problem, Mr. Shaw.
And, uh, Mr. Harris, I think you said no cookery on the premises, right?
That's no cookery on the premises. So the cook and all, there are no plate, no plate to ask for and, like, the person.
And they agree with everything Mr. Harris just recorded?
Right, the reports. Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion to approve.
So I had, I, I have a motion on the second, I missed the picture. But, please, uh. Before we do, and Mr. Villalenta?
Yes, I'm here.
So, uh, anything that you want to add into that?
No, literally, no.
We, we already, and then I see you for any.
Yeah, they have to see me anyway before they come in. Use variance, dimensional variances, whatever.
Berusa?
Yeah.
Gignana?
Yes.
Tasa?
Yes.
Lozak?
Yes.
Lubucci?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Wow?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Do you have a five-minute minutes next?
And that would be.
Mr. Let's let the show, Mr. Jordan, we'll be late. Call the board, uh, the zoning board of adjustments, uh, over in here. Just for a little housekeeping, we had, for those who are back who either came in late, we adjourned case Z B twenty seventeen zero eight thirty-three thirty-seven. I don't know if anybody's here for that case. It has been adjourned to January fourth, twenty eighteen. But that being said, uh, that's case is sixty-five sixty-nine, not at. Z B twenty seventeen zero nineteen. Applicant is proposing an add to an existing facility, a basement office. Correct?
Did you say add?
Yeah, that's what I said.
We, we're continuing existing use or not.
Because we know the general, make your position when you.
Okay.
And how we ask this?
Yes.
Good. Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, my name is John Guadagnoli. I'm the architect of the project who prepared the plans. Uh, the explaining the project to you with me is, uh, Mr. Len Blasto. The, uh, administrator and manager for the doctor.
The Dr. Ricardi.
Dr. Ricardi, who is the, uh, who's, who's.
Uh, one question. Um, you're an LLC, right?
Who is?
The applicant is an LLC?
Yes.
Is, is Dr.? He, he's not the, uh, he's the owner of the property.
Yeah.
Has an LLC.
Correct.
Uh, so, so the applicant is a limited liability company, right?
Correct.
Because according, pursuant to law, if you're a corporation or an LLC, you need to be represented by a lawyer, by, by a, a New Jersey attorney. I thought you were when, when it came on.
Yeah, uh, okay, I think it's just, just the, the doctor's office.
Yeah, it's the doctors. He's not, he's not an LLC.
It says, the application said.
Well, the property is in an LLC, but it, it's the owner of the business is not an LLC.
But, no, the business is an LLC.
What, no. Okay, is the applicant the owner of the property or not?
Yes, Dr. Ricardi.
Dr. Ricardi is the owner of the property.
Correct.
Is he the applicant here?
Yes.
So he's an LLC, right?
Well, they, they.
Or part of an LLC.
Let's be clear now. You're gonna have multiple buildings and it can be used as LLCs. This building is in an LLC, correct?
Correct.
So you need an attorney?
You have to, you have, in an LLC and a corporation, we didn't make the law. And it's not even in the M L U, uh, the legislature. But you need an attorney representing you, even if an attorney stood up, gave his or her name and sat down, that's okay, but you have to be represented by an attorney.
Well, he owns, I, I wasn't clear on it either because he owns the practice.
You have the application?
No.
So in the application, it says LLC.
We have it down as sixty-five sixty-nine York Ave, LLC.
Well, that's.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. The applicant's mailing address is.
Correct. That's Dr. Ricardi. Well, the bank will, they put.
It says applicant sixty-five, not M U LLC. The applicant's address, which you're letting me know, is the doctor's address. It's telling you the doctor has that building in an LLC. That's it. Do you have a copy of the application?
No, not, not on me here.
Okay, but I think it would be a good idea.
You know what I'm confused about? When they went for the mortgage on the property and they claimed it was an LLC.
No, that has nothing.
I think the deed, I think the deed is recorded in his name.
Applicants an LLC.
Now, if you want to hire Mr. Mr. Gasion, he's right behind you. We don't, no, it's, it's a technicality, but it's.
Can we do it? Can we? No, we could start this process in June, so.
You might want to check with an attorney, whether you need a planner as well. Just trying to tell you. If you're gonna ask one question, I would ask a whole gamble. You need a planner, you know, things of that nature. I would invest a little time in that and come to that.
You may not, but, but just, if you're gonna, if you're gonna hire an attorney, what you need to, to, to pursue this application, if you, you may want to ask him or her, okay, other than you, what, who, who else might be suggested we need in the application? Again, you might not need any more than two of you, but, but for an LLC, you need to have somebody who's a licensed attorney. If, if you weren't, no problem, but that's.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't know if it was an LLC.
No need to apologize. It's, it's a.
To me, it was a.
I'm surprised he didn't catch it in the application.
We, we don't know, we don't know.
We don't know who's coming.
Sometimes they put an attorney down, others it says to be advised. And it only when they walk in the door do we know whether or not, who the attorney is.
And I know this.
All right.
Well, you know. Well, let, let, let him cop that day off, so, you know, I don't know where they.
So we have to. No, we have to reapply it. We have to reapply again?
No, 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 we'll carry it.
Carry it.
Notice has been good. What we, what we can do, it's up to the board. We carry it to the next meeting.
Like, what about can they waive, uh, can they waive the time? They're not attorneys.
Well, we're still good as far as, as, I'm assuming we're still good and we're, we're, we're well within time. This is the first time this is enlisted, right? So what the board could do would be carry it to January fourth, no further notice. Between now and then, uh, maybe even contact, uh, get a recommendation if you haven't worked in, in Belleville. Work very often.
No, it's been Dr. Ricardi.
Okay. And, and, and get the attorney and have him or her come in and we'll, we'll get going on. That's not a problem. So there's nothing else you have to file. Everything's good. Everything's good.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay. I hate to, I hate to brought that up. It's obvious.
So, so everybody in New York, anyone is? Application Z B twenty seventeen zero nineteen sixty-five sixty-nine, not at you. Sixty-nine, not any LLC has been adjourned to, to January fourth.
Twenty eighteen? Twenty eighteen? Yeah, that sounds good.
Fuck it up.
Almost twenty twenty?
Tried to get you the business there. For the record, I guess. Let me team this up here. Gasion, are you right with you?
I'm not in any rush.
Well, I didn't have dinner.
We're good. Bobby, you could have charged it every morning, he's gonna, and can.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna, um, I guess I, I have the, um.
So, the next app, the next application is Z B twenty seventeen dash twenty point two forty Main Street, point two forty Main Street LLC. Do you want to talk? Just wanna make sure.
I've done this once or twice before, my life. Notice and, uh, servicer are.
Yes, yes.
If I'm saying this in part, the subject application proposes a truck on the turnoff, right, for parking truck over one and a half ton in weight and the outdoor storage, uh, associated.
Correct. Mr. Chair members of board council, name is Robert Gasion. The firm is Gasion Motto, five twenty-four Union Avenue, Belleville. I represent the applicant in this matter, fourteen dash forty Main Street Associates LLC. The client is seeking approval to use the property for parking and storage of trucks and trailers. This is an I V zone and the use is permitted as a conditional use. But there's a condition that is not complied with in that there is no building covering a minimum of ten percent of the lot area. So the reason for this application has nothing to do with the use, has to do with the fact that there isn't a building on the property covering ten percent or more of the lot area. Therefore, we're seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval and a D three variance. The witnesses you'll hear from this evening are Bob Kilgannon of fourteen dash forty Main Street Associates LLC, Wayne Yanoni of twenty-one twenty McCarter Highway Associates LLC, who is the tenant on the property, and Bill Stimmel, the engineer and planner. Mr. Kilgannon will discuss the ownership of the property and what it is he is seeking approval to do at the site. Mr. Yanoni of twenty-one twenty McCarter Highway Associates will discuss the storage of trucks and trailers at the site and review the business operation. The final witness will be the engineer slash planner. Bill Stimmel will review certain aspects of the site and discuss, discuss both the positive and negative criteria that justify the approval of the use. Mr. Kilgannon. Could you raise your right hand, please, sir? In part to this application, do you swear the testimony here about the showing the truth?
I do.
State your name and spell your last name, please.
Robert Kilgannon, K I L G A N N O N.
Thank you. Robert, what's your business address?
Four sixty Getty Avenue, lifting New Jersey.
Your occupation?
Property manager.
And are you the property manager? And are you the property manager of fourteen dash forty Main Street in Belleville?
I am.
And what entity owns that property?
Fourteen dash forty Main Street Associates LLC, its partner is a Kessler Family Trust.
Any buildings on the property?
No.
Who leases the property currently?
Twenty-one twenty McCarter Highway Associates.
Was there until sometime early this year another tenant on the property?
There was.
Is that tenant now moved to another one of the Kessler properties in Belleville?
It has.
And twenty-one twenty McCarter Highway Associates now leases the entire property?
Correct.
Briefly tell the board how it is used, briefly.
It is used for the, uh, the parking of trucks and trailers.
And does a related Kessler property own the adjacent property to this site?
It does.
And is the access to this site over that adjacent property and is there an easement that's been filed to reflect that?
There is an easement that has been filed to reflect that access.
And is there any structure on the site?
No.
And is there any plans to erect a structure on the site?
There are none.
I have no further questions of Mr. Kilgannon.
Any questions of this witness by the board?
No questions?
Yes, I'm gonna take that as a no. Anybody in the audience have any questions?
Yes, I would. Owen DeCoss in Frankie's statement, he says there are two accessory structures on the property. That's where I was confused.
Is that in the back?
Those were, those were removed quite some time ago.
There were temporary structures, I guess, in one dock, no, nothing, nothing permanent since the early eighties, maybe.
Okay. And the easement has been filed?
It has. Not by my office, but it has. It's reflected on the plan, the easement is reflected. And it has been filed, I have a copy of the documentation provided by another law firm.
Again, and then one, and then seeing none, uh, anybody in the audience have any questions of this witness on testimony? Nothing left to show, nor has been that. Go ahead.
Mr. Yanoni.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Could you raise your right hand, please? With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give, showing the truth?
Yes, sir.
State your name and spell your last name, please.
Wayne Yanoni, Y A N N O N E.
Mr. Yanoni, are you a member of twenty-one twenty McCarter Highway Associates LLC?
Yes, I am.
Is that entity the tenant at fourteen dash forty Main Street in Belleville?
That's correct.
And what is it you're using the site for?
We call it a drop yard, the use that we parked empty trucks and trailers there.
And what are the hours of operation?
Sometimes it could be twenty-four seven.
And the number of trucks that you park there on a half each day?
Approximately three.
And is there any security at the site?
At the moment, the only security is there is a lock gate.
And where is your own office located?
I didn't hear it, I did.
I'm sorry. Speak up.
Look what's the security.
It's just, at the moment, there's only a lock gate.
A lock gate?
Yes.
And is your own business operation located near the site?
Yes, it's five hundred feet away.
Okay, just speak a little louder. And are you able to keep an eye on this site from that location? Or do you have some of your employees go back and forth to check the site?
No, my employees are constantly there, you know, during the day. There's a few folks that are there during the evening and I'm there constantly seven days a week, back and forth. But there is no set times, but there's usually a lot of, I give them, one or two of my employees.
Do you have designated spaces for these trucks?
Yes, we do.
And how do they know where their designated space is?
They're marked and numbered.
And is there a sign on the fence?
Yes, sir.
Are any repairs done at this site?
No, sir.
Any fuel at this site?
No, sir.
Any storage at this site other than the vehicles?
No, sir.
No further questions of this witness.
Any man, go ahead.
The truck drivers, if they go to pick up, if they, if they go to take a truck out, where do they leave their vehicles?
In this, in this spot where the truck goes.
These are trailers, correct? Tr- trailers?
Yeah.
Yes.
They would have to hook up to it, either a drop or off or hook up to one.
No, they're private vehicles, that they drove to get there.
No, right, tractors. The, the, the spots are for trailers, correct?
Yes, I think what the gentleman's.
Their own personal vehicle, he was asking, is what Mr. Yanoni said, they take the same space. When they pull a vehicle out, they put their car in. So the tractor.
There's a number, everyone, everyone is assigned a number and that number would go from their power unit to their personal vehicle.
Okay, okay, so, so you do sort of tractors and trailers?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I want to say, this is permitted use.
No, no.
We're not here for that. We're here, but it's the building.
The building. The lack of a building, they just wore the.
Anybody else? Does anybody in the audience have questions on testimony given by this witness? Nothing left to show, oh, I'm sorry, Frank.
How far is the parking off that property line? The vehicles on the, on the prop, uh, on the property, how far is it off the property? So many of the variances, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Because my original denial later, you came in with vague plans, now you came in with different plans. And I didn't get to see them, so you just want to make sure you just call it all the variances.
Okay.
It's not showing here how far they're going to park.
How, how close are the vehicles parked to the property line?
Oh, he's got five yards, he's got five yards up that I see.
Okay.
So we're good?
He's good, he's good.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
So there's no questions by the audience?
No.
The board is left.
Mr. Stimmel. Raise your right hand, please. With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give, showing the truth?
I do.
Could you state your names and spell your last name, please?
William Stimmel, S T I M M E L.
Mr. Stimmel, you've appeared before us previously, uh, several times, you're, you're an engineer?
I'm a licensed engineer and a licensed planner and, uh, both licenses are current, very good.
And, and I, I haven't appeared tonight in both capacities. And I believe you've qualified in both capacities.
Yes, I have no issues with anyone else. So we're trying to start with that.
Uh, I'm gonna start with the engineer first. Mr. Stimmel, would you please review the existing conditions?
Certainly, refer to the plan that was prepared by Bruce Riggs of Riggs Associates, uh, submitted to the board and is dated, uh, June sixteen, twenty seventeen.
And there have been no changes between, between that, there's no differences between that one and the one that we have?
No.
Okay.
I'm sure the board members are all well familiar with the site, but the site is located on a property bound by Route twenty-one to the west, or to the east rather, Mill Street ramp to the north, the adjoining Kessler property to the west and the second river to the south. Under existing conditions, the lot is undeveloped, it's covered with gravel pavement. Uh, there are lighting improvements on the site, there's three, uh, double-handed lights on utility poles located on the westerly property line. Uh, there's additional overhead lighting just off the site to the north along the Mill Street ramp and high-powered LED lights off the property, uh, just to the east along the Route twenty-one frontage. As far as site drainage goes, generally speaking, and very generally speaking, the site drains slightly towards the Passaic River side of the property, Route twenty-one side of the property. Uh, would not say that there's consistent drainage pattern on the site, however, that is the general pattern. Uh, the site is paved with gravel again, so for the most part, water is going to percolate into the ground. However, there is an inlet located adjacent to the site driveway and a second inlet located on the eastern property line. Uh, the site is currently used for the storage of trucks. Uh, there are a few refuse containers located throughout the property which are emptied frequently, there's not a dumpster as such, uh, but the refuse is handled that way. I can tell you that based on my visits to the site, I guess I just happened to be there when they were doing the cleanup, there were two gentlemen moving around the site, cleaning up the refuse and then emptying the drums. Uh, but that is it as far as the existing site conditions.
Just one question, you mentioned this, would you again review the access easement?
Certainly, there's an access easement which is roughly thirty-five to forty feet wide. It's located on the adjoining parcel to the west, parallel to the Mill Street ramp and that's used for inverse and evers to the site.
What are the proposed conditions?
Proposed conditions and the proposed use of the property are exactly the same as what's existing right now.
So there's no change planned for this property whatsoever and you're not seeking approval for any change?
Correct, uh, there, there is a site plan which has been submitted, but it reflects no changes and that's just an administrative thing because it's required with the use variance.
Would you, uh, review the zoning as it applies to this site?
Certainly, the, uh, site is located in the IB zone, industrial zone. Uh, the uses that are permitted in the zone are industrial in nature, as the board might imagine. Uh, allows for manufacturing facilities, warehouses, auto repair, auto body repair, uh, similar uses. Uh, there are also a series of conditional uses related to the IB zone, uh, such as public transportation facility, public utility facilities, recycling facilities and truck terminal. Uh, this application, of course, is for a truck terminal.
Would you review the, uh, conditional circumstances by which this would have been permitted?
Correct, uh, there are two conditions related to the allowance of truck terminals as conditional use in the IB zone. Uh, the first is that there must be a building, uh, not to exceed twenty percent lot coverage with a minimum of ten percent lot coverage. There's no building existing or proposed, so we, we deviate from the conditional use standard in that regard. Uh, the second condition is that maneuvering of trucks, trailers and tractor trailers shall be within the lot of the, of such terminal and the site does comply with that, there's more than sufficient maneuvering area in the center of the property for the maneuvering of trucks. But based on the deviation from the conditional use standards, we need a D three variance.
And as, would you review the standard that applies to a D three as opposed to a D one application?
Certainly, the, uh, the D three and the D one variance, although both considered use variances, have different standards as determined by the state of New Jersey. Uh, the reasoning behind that is because with the D one variance, you're making an application for use which is not permitted in the zone. With the D three variance, the use itself is permitted in the zone as determined by the governing body of the municipality. Uh, you simply need to address the deviation from the standards of the conditional use. So you're not talking about the use itself and that's not what you're asking permission for, per se. You're asking for permission for the deviation from the use standards. So in that case, a lot of the things which go into the positive and negative criteria for a D one variance, such as the, uh, site suitability, the advancing, the purposes of zoning for the positive criteria, those fall away. Uh, the substantial detriment to the public good and the impairment of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance as it relates to the use, that falls away, the, uh, justification of why the use was omitted from the zone and why it should be approved, that falls away as well. And what you're left with is in order to satisfy the positive criteria, you have to address the deviations from the standards of the conditional use. Uh, that's the positive criteria. So in this case, the, uh, the ordinance requires that you have a terminal building for a truck terminal in the I zone. And I think the reasoning behind that is because with truck terminals, you have a variety of services that are provided on the site, including but not limited to truck storage, which is what we have here, as well as the storage and transfer of goods. There's some administrative functions, uh, frequently, but not always truck repair and so on and so forth. All that we're proposing to do with this site is the storage of trucks. So all those aspects of the terminal use which would require a building are not going to be performed on this property. Therefore, the, uh, deviation from that conditional use standard will have no negative impact on the municipality.
Just to repeat, so there are no repairs being done here, no refueling being done here, no administrator functions at this location?
That is correct.
And would you review the negative criteria?
Certainly, the negative criteria relates to the, uh, substantial detriment to the public good and the, uh, negative impact towards the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Uh, based on the limited nature of the use, the fact that the site is bound by, uh, highway, uh, by the second river, by industrial properties to the north and the west, uh, there will be no negative impact on the surrounding community or on the zone plan and zoning ordinance.
And did you have an opportunity to review the letter from Mr. DiLorenzo and the letter from Mr. Harris?
I did.
Any issues that were raised by either of those letters?
Aside, I think, from the clarifications as to what we're proposing to do and the fact that the, the existing use and the existing site are proposed to remain as is, I don't think there was an issue with anything in either of the letters.
I have no further questions of this witness.
Any, uh, questions by members of the board?
Are you gonna merge the lots or are you gonna place them?
No, there are not version lots.
Any other questions?
No.
Mr. Harris?
I have nothing.
Are you satisfied?
This is all supposed to be understood, the operation.
Yeah, it's just, well, as the notes that I gave, Mr. Riggs, I'm gonna take, uh, it won't be no, no mechanical, no storing of fuel, no administration work, just storage of trucks.
Correct.
No, no trailers that are converted to office units on the site?
No. The tenant has all, five hundred thousand feet away into Newark.
And one of my colleagues just said, we would get a copy of that easement, right?
Uh, yeah, I can submit a copy of that easement. I will send it tomorrow, if that's okay?
Thank you.
Uh, unless somebody wants to make a copy now, I've got it.
No, no, just send it to the.
I'll send it.
I have a question. On security, the owner's gonna have the gates locked.
That's it.
Nobody, nobody there.
Is locked, that was the testimony from the tenant.
I'm not going to secure security. People break in.
Well, but again, nothing is there except trucks. There's no, uh, there's nothing for anybody to steal except the truck itself.
I worked for a company where they broke and they cut a hole in the front and stole the wheels off a trailer.
Oh, well, you could be right about that. There's lights and the tenant has his main location less than a thousand feet away and what he says is, is people go back and forth on a regular basis and these trucks come at different hours. It's not like everybody pulls in there at five o'clock in the morning and leaves at, uh, eight o'clock at night. They're coming in and out, so there's lots of activity and not an easy circumstance for a thief to size up and steal anything.
I'll ask you that, any other questions? Uh, members of the board, seeing none, I'll ask you that, anybody in the audience have any? Testimony, if I could give, kind of, just for our.
Another question. EPA is working on that property, isn't it?
No, he said the DEA, is that?
EPA, he said EPA.
EPA.
Any environmental issues? I, I don't know if there's any environmental issues, I don't think it's relevant to the application, but I can tell you, I can tell you this, I worked along the river as a young man and there weren't many places where there weren't environmental issues, that's the way it was. If you ever saw what was at the bottom of Drummond Street, you wouldn't shop there.
Mr. Gassion, I guess, Mr. Pusso's question, you have anything to add on whether it's, there's an EPA issue, you don't know, you do know?
I don't know, obviously I have clients here I can call, but I don't think it's a zoning issue at this point.
I don't disagree with you.
It is what it is, if there's a problem, it's your problem, it's your client's problem.
It's my client's problem.
Hi, Jack, you hear what he said? Again, out in the audience, there's no more questions up here, right? Out in the audience, is there anybody who wishes to give testimony? Seeing none, nothing left to reflect that, would you like to sum up?
I'd like to sum up very quickly. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a permitted use, it's conditional in the IB zone because we haven't met one of the conditions. The key condition is we can turn around on the site, we're not causing any problems. The other condition is we have a building there, but we're not in need of a building. We don't do anything at the site except pull vehicles in, store them and take them out. There's a D three application, there's the Coventry Square case, how would you mitigate the issues? But there's nothing here to mitigate. This is not like we don't have sufficient parking spaces or some condition that creates a problem. This is a condition that's irrelevant to this application, so it is nothing to mitigate. Certainly, there's no harm to the intent and purpose of the zone plan if this application is approved. This is a location next to Route twenty-one and then the river on Main Street, back away from Main Street. from Main Street, is an access easement off of Main Street, not even seen by anybody. So I don't see how to commit any harm to the intended purpose of the zone plan with this application by not having a building on this site. I thank the board for the usual time and attention.
Okay, discussion. Mr. DiLorenzo, anything you have that you want us to know?
I'm good. I'll get them when they come in, I might want a certification if it's in a flood zone or not. I can do when they come in.
Okay, you okay with that, Mr. Bashan?
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Harris, any other? Discussion by the board?
As long as Mr. Riggs gets a copy of the easement, I'm good.
Mr. Gassillon's gonna give to Gina, and if you want me to be her con to look at it, that's fine.
Anybody else? Mr. Fucci, no money? I have a motion up?
With that being said, can you make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Mr. George, anybody else?
Second.
Second, Mr. Crusoe. Okay, that's all right, boys.
Caruso.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Loza.
Yes.
Fucci.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Palano.
Yes, just for, just for housekeeping, counsel, could you just read into the record on what we agreed to regarding the conditions?
My normal conditions regarding the reports, no storage of fuel or no vehicle repairs on the site, no administrative work on the site from trailer, anything like that, not merging lots, copy of easement will be provided, that's pretty much it.
The hours will last?
I think it's 20.
24 hours.
Anything, anything good? Don't go nowhere, acting special, we have a few things to do. We'll start with the, we have, did anybody get the copy of the new calendar?
Yes.
Is there any concerns or objections? Seeing none, so, can I have a motion on the new calendar for 2018? If anyone here...
Yeah, Jerry.
I'm gonna hear it, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
All right, thank you. Call the board.
Caruso.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Loza.
Yes.
Fucci.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Palano.
Yes. That's it, all right, Jake?
Yes.
I gave Tina, I gave Tina.
What's that?
The easement. Send it out there.
Of course, she's gonna...
If you can send it to me, it's on the...
Before I forget, Merry Christmas to everyone.
Merry Christmas. Happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you.
And you have a motion to adjourn. Motion accepted. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, happy New Year, gentlemen.